Supervisor Vecchio and members of the town board, we got a letter from King Cullen just a couple of days ago with concerns with summer nights. And it says in whole that they've been informed that the application for the planned St. James Summer Nights was recently withdrawn by the town board and there is no current pending applications for these events. However, King Cullen is concerned that Newsday has reported these events are still on schedule to take place both St. James Elementary School and King Cullen parking lot in St. James. Please be advised that King Cullen is unable to accommodate these events in our parking lot at our St. James store for the St. James Summer Night series on any of the nights proposed, June 28th, July 12th, July 26th, and August 9th. We commend the Community Association of the Greater St. James for their initiative and wish them success in their endeavors. Preserving the historic character of St. James and promoting commercial interests are certainly laudable goals which we share. However, we have responsibility to our St. James customers to be accessible and open during the hours to satisfy their shopping needs. We request that you read this letter into the...
Well, believe it or not, Carrie Mar called me this morning, about fifteen minutes to ten, and she said that, um, let me think what she said. I informed her that there was a letter from King Cullen.
I certainly did too.
And she said that she was going to congregate somewhere else. Did she tell you that?
No.
She didn't tell you that?
No, I just, I informed about the King Cullen letter so she wasn't, so she wasn't blindsided today because I told her a few days ago.
Did you just get that?
I got this probably a week ago, and she's aware of it.
They sent it to you a week ago?
Uh, I'm sorry, June 5th.
Oh, it's Monday.
Yeah, alright, yeah, that's what it was sent.
So, on the, on the application that she's got congregating at King Cullen parking lot?
I, I'm not sure.
I don't think so.
Because the original application was all on the north side of the tracks.
Right.
So, when it was decided upon going on the south side of tracks, first time I heard of it was at the last town board meeting. So, I don't think there's anything written about how they're gonna, you know, do it on the south side of the tracks.
Well, she called because it was not on the agenda, that's how I had the conversation. Why was it not on, pending these letters?
Well, I had a conversation with the town attorney yesterday because I noticed it wasn't there, and his comments were, we still, we didn't get any confirmation that is, that everything was copacetic with the rest of the business owners.
Well, we had the two groups here twice, I guess. I think the supervisor at the end of that, and I think we all agreed that they should go work that out, chamber civics, and then come back when they worked it out. So, they were all satisfied with what was going on there. And I had asked Matt as well, and he said that he hasn't heard anything referencing that they have worked it out. There's still some opposition between the two groups.
That was when we understood that it was going to be two of King Cullen and two on the other side, and we had spoken, they were going to try to work it out, but now this changes things.
Well, I'm under the, I was under the impression when I spoke to Carrie this morning that she thought that her, it was all, she thought that she gave you the impression that it was all worked out.
Which is true, she did, I believe that night she did.
I mean, I'm just waiting, I'm waiting for, you know, I contacted to make sure that, you know, there's no miscommunication in why it wasn't on the, on the agenda.
When is it supposed to take place?
I think it starts on 28th.
Twenty eighth.
Yeah.
June?
June.
That's the first day.
Do we have the ability to use the St. James Railroad Station parking lot, like say, the northerly half of it, and to accommodate it there? It will help the businesses, it will help not having a problem with, you know, the traffic flow.
I don't see why not.
I just didn't know, that would probably be a solution because it's, at that time of night, it's pretty much empty for the weekend.
What time, what time do they start?
I think it's, what is it, six o'clock they were starting?
Five.
Five?
But who owns that parking lot?
The town.
So, if it's the town, what's the town parking lot?
But we have, the town attorney has the tick because we have restrictions with the MTA on that, so we have to make sure we don't have any restrictions, but it might be a solution for the whole pot.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
May not be a good one. Town attorney, you can touch with Carrie Mar, iron out all these, these wrinkles, and we proceed from there. If they get ironed out, then we'll move ahead.
And if we can't do it there, you have Lake Avenue and Railroad Avenue going down. It's like, it's like Blacktop Millings, right across from Guardiola's Bakery down to Mariches, there's a good spot there where maybe they could park trucks and stuff and not interfere with business in there. There's two areas where it's possible.
Where you hit the right of Guardiola's, you go straight there.
Exactly, yeah, and you have the whole left side where basically people park on concrete and asphalt. Millings, which is a solid surface where maybe they could park their trucks and not affect the businesses.
Well, it's my suggestion, a good point, have the town attorney contact her.
Right, right.
Bring her in, find out exactly what, and then if it's okay, then we'll put it on the agenda, if it isn't.
And the other place they had was closing down just the one lane of Lake Avenue and leaving the easterly lane of Lake Avenue open so that the businesses can thrive, so the traffic can just go one way and come around the block, so that they can, so they can still operate. So, that's a third suggestion.
When the town attorney can reconcile that with her?
Right, I would think so, I just basically let everybody know, the people that have the businesses.
You were calling in the morning, this morning and this evening, resolve this before?
Because we'd have to put it on this afternoon because we're not, right, there's no nighttime meeting.
No, there isn't.
There is, okay.
On 22nd, I think.
One suggestion, Fourth Precinct might have a problem with that because when we try to do that on, on runs and walks, they're totally against it, so it's...
Against closing a lane?
Having one lane open when you have pedestrians in the other lane. So, I, it's just a recommendation that the Fourth Precinct be aware of that also so they can put their input also.
If we could use that railroad parking lot, that would be ideal.
I think a lot, a lot of the cause of that, there'd still be some, I think we'd have to figure out how to, how to work that, it's a good idea.
Alright, thanks, Vee.
Okay, supervisor?
Yeah, well, look, I want to give you something, Mr. Puleo. I'm not even gonna tell you what it is, but you know what it is. I think you need to figure it out and tell the person, we're not doing this, here.
What is that?
PJ Miller.
Well, Mrs. Miller, I had spoke with John Valentine about some of her...
Suggestions?
Complaints, not suggest, suggestions, because the suggestions, what she's talking about is, is policies and procedures that the town board would have to approve.
Sure.
So, I would, I would suggest that we, you know, maybe we'll come up with some, some recommendations, Mr. Valentine and myself, and then you can, you can mill it over. Mrs. Miller's complaining about people that are in the Marina, you know, back in the sixties and early seventies, and their kids have taken over their slips. Now, when I first came into the clerk's office back twelve years ago, I, I see that as an issue, so now we collect birth dates of birth, so we can tell who the person is. But still, there are people remaining down there that we're not sure, and this is even before the, the people that are, are working the Marina were there also, so we're doing a, we're doing a little bit of a, you know, trying to figure out who's who. But she's talking about changing the whole process, you know, maybe putting a dollar figure on, you know, staying on the list and things like that, but, but I, you know...
Does she reference the state, not in that letter, but some other letter, that they renew it every ten years?
I believe it's every three years, yeah.
Every three, huh?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, there, there are many recommendations, I mean, she made four or five of them to the supervisor, and then those, you know, those emails came to me, but certainly that's your purview to, to make, to make changes and for us to enforce those policies.
Well, but do you see any problems? I mean, why, why shake the boat if there's no problems?
Well, we don't have any problems, but we, you know, Mrs. Miller keeps emailing us, asking you, asking, has there been any conversation with the town board about some of her recommendations?
Well, there hasn't been.
No, there hasn't.
I've been dealing with Regina and back and forth, and you...
Right, yes. But we had a, we had an email two or three days ago, or actually it was, I think it was Friday, about where we, where we stand with that, and I didn't want to answer her back until I had some solid information.
Well, does she, is, what she's saying, is she correct about that?
I...
Is there an unfairness, a basic unfairness here?
Well, you know, she's claiming that, you know, a, a boater who was there in 1968 gave his slip to his son and then moved on. It's well before my time or anybody else's in the Marina, and that might be true, but there's nothing we can do about that at this point, but going forward, like I said, we have, we've rectified that, making sure that we know that, you know, if it's Patrick Vecchio, his age is this way, if it's Patrick Vecchio, the son, we, we know, we know who they are. So, we're, we're, we, we try to, you know, take care of all of those loopholes as we see them happening, but she's asking for a change in how we, how we, you know, hand out the Marina slips, and I don't know how, you know, how you feel about that, so we'll come up with some recommendations.
Just to be clear for us non-boaters, somebody in 1970 comes to you for a permit to get a boat slip. When do they have to renew the boat slip?
Every, every year they have to pay for their boat slip.
When they come in to renew it?
They have to wait in twenty years.
What?
They have to wait in twenty years when they get the slip.
Takes twenty years to get a slip in Smithtown.
Okay, well, but they're there, let's just say they're there.
Right, okay.
So, they come to you to renew.
Mm-hmm.
They have to give you what, a boat license, their, what do they have to give you to renew?
Well, they give their registration.
The boat?
And, yes. And they, you know, proof that they own the boat.
Okay, so, if they give their boat to their child, then they still have the right registration, but if they give their slip and their son or daughter has a new boat, then you would realize...
We would know that, I mean, the...
So, then they, that person, the second, the, the son or daughter can't have the slip?
No, it's husband and spouse only.
Right, it can't happen anymore because, you know, we have a lot more information that would show that it was transferred from, you know, a, from the spouse, husband or the wife to the sons or the daughters.
And it can't do that.
And it can't happen, you know what I mean? You have to, you have to put yourself on the boat list, and a lot of people have, you know? It's just, like I said, we've taken all of the loopholes out of this process, but it's still a lengthy wait, like, like the councilman said, it takes, you know, fifteen to twenty years to get a boat slip.
But that's not our complaint, the complaint is about people still, having the boat slip and keeping it alive for thirty, forty years. So, you said that you're working out what...
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna come up with some recommendations, and then we'll, you know, then you can talk about it.
Sure, good.
Ready? Great, thank you.
David, this may be for you or the town attorney. Jazawali?
Probably some of each.
Yeah.
It's a litigation.
So, that's executive.
This is a little executive, I think, Matt. Go ahead, David.
Well, I had sent the town board a memo on the zone change pending, the pending zone change petition. The planning department and the planning board recommended denial, and the Suffolk County Planning Commission said that it would not make a decision until it got more information. They want four studies done. So, at this stage, normally what happens is the planning board schedules a matter for a hearing, but if there, if the petition doesn't make any sense, I think sometimes the town board says, why waste the petitioner's time and money and the neighbor's time and money to have a hearing where there's no support for the change, for the, for the rezoning? So...
Can you get us a copy of the minutes in the meeting and, so we can all read exactly what was said, and we can make a decision...
Sure.
Whether we want to hear it or not?
Mm-hmm.
If I understand, you know, I saw a little bit on the government TV channel.
Right.
The people are incensed, and I can understand why, but I'd like to see the full minutes.
Okay. I'll get that later today.
That litigation's still ongoing, right? They haven't settled that.
I, I don't know.
That fight ain't...
That's still going.
Still going?
I put this on, in my workflow only because it troubles me that a club that's based in Nassau County puts in for a permit to have a run in Smithtown, and what is the run for? To prepare for Suffolk County Marathon and Half Marathon. So, they use our streets to train, impact people's lives, can get out of their driveways, et cetera. Are they on the agenda for this, do you know what this, that's in left now?
What's the name of the...
I don't know if they're on the agenda, but that was part of the recent amendments that we made to the code. Those are going into effect October 1st.
Right, October 1st, we're gonna start with the new regulations, right?
Yeah, we gave all the organizations six months to kind of get up to speed with the new regulations.
It's the day before August 17th, so it'll get on the agenda.
Okay. Is there a permit, or do you have to beat the seven times up?
I got a contractual matter, everybody can speak up, but I need a contractual matter. I have a court case. I have another contractual matter or potential lawsuit. And I have a grievance concerning a personal matter. There were four items here that need to go into executive center. And David, you are here for what?
Whatever you want, nothing in particular.
I asked David also, I was working on him with the Kings Park revitalization and also the Smithtown downtown revitalization with the money you put in the budget, supervisor? You put $200,000 for beautification of downtown Smithtown, and also there's money in the tree fund to redo, to do the Kings Park area also, so David and staff and myself have been working on both areas. They're almost finished with a complete report, which will be within the budget you already established, but some of it's on DOT, so we're gonna have to get DOT permission, so we're gonna need your expertise to write DOT to get a quick response so we can plant some trees where they're...
So, is that what you want to do with the beautification money, plant trees?
Part of it.
A large part of it, I think it's a...
In Kings Park?
And Smithtown, right.
Were these because of the trees that were taken down by PSNG, or the trees that are too tall for the...
Um, no, it's basically places where trees probably should have been, or maybe they were fifty or a hundred years ago, but they're not today. And in Smithtown, there are about three or four locations where the trees, I think, died.
It's just stumps, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there's $200,000, that's not a lot of money, is it, for trees?
That's a lot for trees.
It's a substantial amount, yeah.
So, you don't need the other, you mentioned you referenced something else?
In terms of...
Tree fund, you mentioned.
Well, Russell said the Kings Park, because the $200,000 you put into Kings Park downtown is going towards the vision study.
Oh, it's already there.
Right, so the tree fund will be able to put the ones in downtown Kings Park, you know?
And who picks out the locations?
Well, I and my staff have been picking them out. The, the reason for doing this, Tom had reminded me, is I had sent a memo in, I think it was April, to the board, that trees have a lot of benefits that most people, including planners, didn't realize with respect to lowering drug, illegal drug usage, reducing depression, reducing crime, ten to twelve percent, increasing property values, seven percent, maybe that, you would see that that's kind of logical. However, I was surprised to learn that it had the effect on people's health, increasing lifespan. These are scientific studies, not conjecture or...
This, this is your memo.
Right, I brought a copy with me, actually, but, yeah, the, the numbers were pretty substantial, that, just as an example, planting trees in, I believe it was Philadelphia, reduced drug possession eighteen to twenty-seven percent within a half mile of the... The, the presenter, just like a lot of news, people can tell you the facts in the first phrase in the news, and then the why, I'm not sure that that's a fact, but the why, according to the presenter, was they, the researchers felt that trees hide some of the, two things, some of the depressing things in an urban environment. And then the second thing is, is that the increase in shade and oxygen reduce stress, biological stress.
Really?
But, I'm not an expert in the field.
I think it all comes down to, they kind of look nice.
Yeah, I'm not an expert, I was, I'm, the presentation was given by an engineer, which surprised me, but these were based on scientific studies with controls. Philadelphia, for example, they, they had a neighborhood, they had, the whole city had a high crime rate in the mid-eighties, and they had a controlled neighborhood that already had a lot of trees, and then in the, in the census tracts where they planted trees, crime went down, and the census tracts where they didn't plant trees, crime went up. So, Philadelphia's now planting them in the other census tracts.
Well, we don't have any crime in Main Street Kings Park, so...
I think there was one once.
I know, you said.
Once.
And what, yeah, but isn't most of it concrete?
They'd be in the sidewalks.
Yeah.
On Main Street, yes, they are.
Well, I don't think, going further west, it, it may not be concrete, is there...
It's, when, when we went around and walked it twice, the, on Main Street, there are only about five locations on 25A itself that don't have trees, because the right of way is usually fifty feet wide and the pavement's around thirty-eight. That leaves six feet per side for sidewalk, and that's not really enough room to put in trees. However, in a couple of places where the buildings were set far back and there were no overhead wires, and there was pavement beyond the sidewalk, there was room to put in the tree and still be in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act where people need to get around.
So, you have to pick and choose where you want the trees?
We did.
He just finished this this morning.
For Smithtown.
This is Kings Park.
Well...
Smithtown isn't done yet.
Sure, for Smithtown, and it'll be delayed a little bit because the photographs I took, I accidentally deleted, so I have to take them again, but, um...
Done computers?
Yeah.
How many trees do you think will go in Kings Park?
Twenty-eight in total.
Really?
Yeah.
From where to where?
From the, what used to be a nursery on 25A back when...
What used to be, I don't know what used to be.
Well, okay, well, a long time ago, it was a, a used car dealer.
Was it next to a gas station?
Correct, next to the Valero. From there to Church Street and South and Indian Head Road to Hughes Funeral Home.
So, you're gonna go down Indian Head Road?
Right, and it goes off on the side streets in the business zone. So, it's just, the, most of the streets are on, most of the trees are on town streets.
You're recommending that to keep the crime rate down?
For a whole slew of reasons, crime rate's only one, but to increase lifespan and reduce blood pressure.
Is there, is there a crime rate on Main Street Kings Park?
He said there was one, he remembers.
It was one.
Well, either that or we have a lot of trees and, maybe that's what's helping.
And how do you do it when there's concrete?
Normally, they saw cut a, a rectangle or a square.
And what about all the wires and piping on the ground?
Well, that, that, what I tried to do was look, there are a lot of markouts already in the places, and where you don't see markouts, you're looking for valves, all kinds of indications of underground utilities.
And that's a free service to the town to have all that checked.
And where are the, where you said there were markouts, where do you visit, where are the markouts?
They're, they're in the pavement.
It's paint.
Yeah, either blue or, or for water, yellow for electric and so on. A lot of things have already been marked out, but before anybody digs, another markout is required, and if it turns out that indeed there is a telephone line or whatever it is someplace, it may not be possible to plant there, or they have to dig by hand. And they dig around the, the cable or the pipe.
David, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
When you, if you're gonna plant these, are we gonna change the method where there's tree grates put in, as they have been in some municipalities, so that we don't plant it and then it uproots?
What we're recommending is what we saw them do at Wyandance Rising. They use a stone dust that is ADA compliant, Americans with Disabilities Act compliant, we're trying to get the spec from them.
Okay.
And we think that that does like three things. One is if a root does rise, then it's easy to fix, the whole slab of concrete doesn't move up.
Okay.
I'm not so sure you understand, but you said dust?
It's called stone dust, it's...
And what does that do?
What it does is, it's a pavement, oh, it's a dry pavement, there's no binder, there's no asphalt in it.
Right.
So, we'd call it gravel, except that the aggregate is about the size, a little bit bigger than sand, but not so big to be called gravel, let's say about maybe two millimeters in diameter.
So, is that in lieu of the grade?
Correct. And what that does is, you can, you can use crutches and wheelchairs and all that sort of stuff over it, so it's compliant for the disabled, and yet it's flexible that if, because the problem with concrete, it's rigid, and if a root moves a slab of concrete, the whole slab moves an inch up or two inches up or three inches up. But in this, only what's over the root moves, so you shave the top off. So, that's what we're recommending.
And also, secondly, how does this fit in with everything that we've been working on for revitalization of these business districts? We're gonna go in and plant these trees now.
Well, I think, as far as I can tell, everything that we've been planning, or the RPA and the Vision Long Island recommends this, so there's no, as far as I know, it wouldn't be a waste of money, there's no, there are no plans to say widen the road, which then the trees would have to come down. So, it doesn't seem like it's, like it's temporary, you know, that it's a waste.
So, if we do this and we spend the funding, they'll remain there and the renovation work would be around these, these trees that we plant, because they'll remain, remain there, just don't want to see us plant all these trees and then...
And then put in a parking lot or something.
Exactly, we're going to this revitalization that we're working on these plans with.
Well, the RPA plan for Smithtown and Kings Park, we looked at before we went out in the field, and this seems to be consistent with them.
Okay.
And then Kings Park also has that, that vision plan by Vision Long Island, and we looked at that as well.
Okay.
I don't see any conflicts.
Okay.
Very good.
Good question. Okay.
And one thing also, the appraisal, we all know, came in, we can't really talk about it yet, came in for the New York Avenue School. Matthew, we appointed Matthew, and myself went to the first meeting with them. We need to go, we're gonna be going on a second meeting to give, present them with the appraisal.
Wait, you met, and Matthew went where?
We met them here once already, after the town board authorized.
The appraisal people?
No, the school board people.
Oh.
Now, we need to present sometime this week, just present them, set up a meeting to present them with the appraisal, and then wait back for their comments on it.
So, what was your meeting about?
No, the next, that first one was just talking to them about, like the town board asked us to, the possible purchase of the property.
Right.
We ordered the appraisal, as the town board ordered, now it's here, now we need to set up a meeting to present them with the appraisal and then wait for their feedback of what they think of it. Just wanted to inform everybody what's going on.
Why would you do that? Why would you meet with them?
We have to present the appraisal to them, and...
Well, we're at the juncture where we have to communicate the valuation that we received to the school board. So, you know, the, the meeting is one way, you know...
Right, okay, okay, I gotta leave it to your lawyers.
And that's all I got.
Okay.
Yeah, so, we're gonna need the feedback from them of whether or not the, the valuation that we had is acceptable.
David, one of these things I have here, that I need to discuss, is Jazawali. We have a, an application for Jazawali, right?
A zone change, yeah, it's a petition.
Planning board recommended against it?
Correct.
You recommend it against it?
Correct.
So, how do we dispose it?
Well, the normal practice is usually the town board has a hearing, and then after the hearing, if there's no support to change the zoning, the board resolves to deny the petition. Sometimes, I believe the board has declined to actually have a hearing, no hearing is required, because a zoning petition is a petition to change legislation, it's not an application for a permit.
I can't recall, the planning board, are your recommendations speak to the, what's in the ground there and the terms of...
As, I was going to make a pun and say superficially, but as best as we can, we're not experts at that, but based on what we've seen, it was addressed in the memo to the at that, but based on what we've seen, uh, it was addressed in the memo to the planning board and it was discussed at the planning board hearing.
So let me ask you, I, I should go back and read them, but I probably didn't forgot. What do you, uh, is it feasible to really build what they want?
I don't know.
I mean, we always talked about the ground being unsubstantial.
Right. Well, feasible, to my definition, means practical or economical. You know, is it technically possible to remove fill and make the land good enough to live on again? Sure, it's technically possible, but I think feasible means, is it practical? Is, is the cost of removing the material worth it to, you know, is?
And that would be, have to be done if they were to build?
Um, that's up to different levels of government as to what mitigation has to be done. Um, but I think that the material under the ground is only one reason why the change of zone doesn't make sense here. If, if the land were, um, untouched, it's still not a good location for garden apartments because of the surrounding land uses and the distance to, to mass transportation.
Application, I think the application were houses.
It's, no, it's for garden apartments.
KPEs for the houses.
I think the best, but like I said, I said to you earlier, is get everybody a copy of the minutes so they can read them before we make a decision whether we're gonna hear it or not.
We'll send the minutes.
Well, it seems to me if, uh, if they were to excavate all the garbage, that is not a smart thing to do.
I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want my house on top of it.
No, I, I'm not talking about.
But I'd like to read.
I'm talking about the excavation of material that's been in the ground for fifty, sixty years.
Mm-hmm.
What will that do to a neighborhood?
Oh, you mean the process of digging it out?
Yes, of course. Well, come on, you're an expert in the field. What do you think about that?
Expert of what field? Digging out garbage?
Planning.
Oh, well, no, it's, it's, um.
Digging out garbage.
Yeah.
Um, as, as I put in the memo, you know, it's, we would recommend against it. It's not fair to the, the neighbors, but also the proposed zoning isn't consistent with the surrounding zoning. It's an anomaly.
That's another reason why you rejected it.
Um, I did put in the memo that if the town board wanted to have housing there, that the density shouldn't be greater than what the density is today between the L I zone and the R twenty-one zone, because the property's about three quarters R twenty-one.
How many acres is it?
Thirty-six approximately.
And it's all been excavated and gotten filled with garbage?
The, just about, pretty close to a hundred percent. The, the only part that hasn't been excavated is a different zoning petition by Tony Latiri on the abutting piece to the south. And there's actually an overlap between the two petitions where each person is claiming to own a little bit of property that, uh.
That's a good question. It's the, I learned there's no stupid questions. How did all the garbage getting in? Are you talking about it's all garbage in there?
Well, I think when we say garbage, a lot of times we picture like bags of household waste on the back of a garbage truck.
Yeah, but that's not what you're talking about.
I don't think that's the case. I, I think it's construction demolition debris and it's yard waste, um, stumps, um, and smaller material leaves and so on. So I, there might be.
And it was dumped there by the owners used as a waste kind of thing?
Well, it was dumped there, I believe, by other folks. Lawrence Road used to go through historically until about nineteen sixty. And then the highway superintendent blocked it off, so it became a dead end road and it was a dirt road. So virtually no one ever went down that road. However, about a quarter mile up the road from civilization, from Old Northport Road, um, was where Jesuwalie had a mine. And in the nineteen eighties, he emerged the mine a real lot, but nobody knew it.
A mine?
A mine, a sand mine.
Oh, sand mine.
But nobody knew it because no one ever went down the road. Um, and then after a while, he started, someone started filling on his property. Um.
But that subject, that was, that was, uh, I think not quite a superfund site, but it was, uh, a big process for the DC.
It was, um, on a superfund list and then it was delisted.
Oh, it was on the.
Um, I'm sure, delisted somewhere like around nineteen ninety-nine in that area. Um, so it's, uh, whether or not it's, has toxins, um, I don't know. The, their engineering department has a thick report of the test holes done on the property. And the depth of the waste in the holes ranges from about three feet to forty-eight feet. And the average, let's say, is twenty feet deep of waste.
The depth is, some places is forty-eight feet?
Correct.
What was the overwhelming resonance response at the hearing?
I don't think there was anyone in favor.
Okay.
Is a sand mine where the owner takes sand out and sells it? Is that what they do?
What they did, Lynn, is they, they, many of those properties all along, even Northport Road, they, years and years and years ago, the owners of those properties, they sand mined those properties and they went down to depths, you know.
And they sold the sand.
And then they, they made their money that way and then they reclaimed it by letting people come in and put stuff in. Regulations weren't as stiff as they are now either, but it was done many, many years ago. So they then reclaimed all that property by letting people come in and charging them to bring a myriad of different materials.
Million dollar business. So then, they took out all the sand, so it goes like this. I like to say the earth. They took the earth. The earth, the earth. But they stole the sand. Uh, and then, so then they filled it with. And made money that way as well.
Charged people to come in and they charged them to.
So they had a little business going.
Construction debris.
They had a large business going.
Okay. Other than that.
We had Hempstead sanitation trucks dumping it. Again, and it's.
The planning board, the department was opposed for other reasons.
Right.
At two o'clock in the morning.
So it's not necessarily the garbage on the ground that is a detriment.
Well, it is, but that's one of about five different reasons why it's not a good location for a garden apartment zoning.
I don't think it's good for any kind of residential zone from what I'm hearing here.
It's difficult. Um.
Sounds to me where the.
Well, then why would we want to hear it?
Well, because it's another point of view.
Which point of view is that?
The petitioner.
From what I'm hearing right now, I think it all does aggravate the surrounding residents. It already came out of court and to David overwhelmingly against it. Why aggravate those people again?
I think the best course of action for the board is to get the minutes from that meeting.
Right.
Have an opportunity to review it.
And then make a decision.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I, uh, add to what Eddie was saying? The town in roughly nineteen forty-nine zoned a lot of land over Old Northport Road for industry. But it was all hilly. Old Northport Road was in a steep valley and hilly land doesn't make sense for industry. But the thinking was, is they would mine it all down to Old Northport Road and make it flat. And that started, but then they kept on going below the road. And then they started to fill up again. And then material that they used for fill, make, isn't ideal for building on. So the idea was, is.
Court of Health would have stopped that.
Maybe today. But the original plan was, was that you'd bring it all down to the road, make it flat, which would make it suitable for building factories and warehouses. And that started, and there are probably about five warehouses that were built, uh, mostly over the town line rather. But like I said.
Became more profitable for the seller material.
People just kept on going below the road.
So what was your suggestion? Review the minutes before we decide?
Yeah, that we were all, well informed by the planning board and the planning department both.
Well, were you at one of those meetings?
No, I was not. Well, yes, I was at the July of two thousand fifteen. I was not.
Was the public outraged?
Well, I don't know if the word is outrage, but the public was opposed.
Yeah.
To me, rage is a strong emotion.
Why would they, why would they, uh, oppose?
Um, I'd have to check. I mean, I know that there was opposition. I'd have to check.
Did you go to that hearing, please?
I watched it.
You watched it?
Mm-hmm. Well, I would think they would be opposed just to upset the ground again and bring up garbage. The smell has to be, or maybe toxic. Although I'm not an expert.
No one knows what's there.
And the test holes that were done were done in like two thousand three or something like that. And Phil continued for years thereafter.
Those test holes, did they test what was dumped there? That was the reason for it? Not just the depth of mining or both?
Yeah, they were basically, if you looked at the logs, you'll see things like brick and wood and, uh,
Okay.
uh, sheet rock and things like that.
Nothing that could be detrimental to the surrounding neighbors?
No, from what I read, no barrels, no liquid was encountered, uh, no odors.
Okay.
So what was your suggestion? Would you review the minutes?
Town attorney.
And make a decision? Review the minutes first before making a decision? Okay. You can send this over?
Sure. Do you want the minutes from the other meeting too? The first?
Yes.
Hearing?
Oh, me, I guess so.
Please.
Sure.
I don't know if anybody has anything, Brian, just.
Thanks, Dave.
I have a personnel matter. I have, uh, what could be a litigation.
Thanks, David.
I have.
He'll tell you when. We'll go to executive session.
That same subject lawsuit. So, um, I'm gonna move to, anybody have anything?
No, good.
I'm gonna move to go to executive session.
Second. No favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.